Anything you have.
You want the light?
Yeah, right.
Right?
It's mood lighting. Energy efficient thing.
We don't want you to be too comfortable in those seats, you're going to sleep.
Right.
One of those days. Sex day.
Is everybody all set? All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is Wednesday, August 1st, 2018. I call this meeting to order. It is 7:32 PM. This meeting is being audio and video recorded. It will be broadcast live on Channel 9. It will be played back on Channel 9 and it will also be placed on YouTube. And with that, I ask that we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First on the agenda, as always, is public input and we do have public here tonight. Does anybody have anything to share? Okay, we'll do it again at the end if you hear something that you'd like to respond to. And at this time, I am going to throw this over to Town Administrator Mallory Aronstein. You have the floor, Madam Administrator.
Good evening. Thank you. So the only item on my report this evening is an ambulance billing clerk update. We receive, we, the town, this is for Chief McGee, ambulance billing clerk and kind of administrative assistant, but the focus really on medical billing. We received 37 applications. We're officially, you know, a great place to work. And we selected nine individuals to interview. There is a panel of three of us and what we did is we each went through the applications separately and created lists and I'm happy to report seven of these nine individuals were on all three of our lists. So that's very promising for who we can employ in that role. So that's, I'm looking forward to that, actually. Interviews are next week. Actually, that's not right. They're the 14th and the 17th, sorry. And that's all I have this evening.
Did you, with the nine that you came up with, are you seeing experience?
Yes.
Oh, that's great.
Yep.
That's important.
Absolutely. So I'm actually really thrilled with the list of nine. Again, seven to show up on all three individuals' lists as we looked at them separately, I think, is a major, a major win for the town and who the applicant pool is. So that's great. Great news.
I'm going to ask a really dumb question and I want everyone to forgive me before I ask it. As you know, the police chief has always had an administrative assistant. So was, I understand that this position did exist at some point in the past. So was, were the last couple of fire chiefs doing their own like administrative work on top of daily duties?
Correct.
There was, well, the billing part was, we know, found out.
Outsourced, yeah.
But.
Just like if he needed, if they needed a letter.
Let me say he had some help, let me say he had some help at home.
Okay. Touche. Fair enough. Well, I'm glad we're professionalizing this. It's really great for the town. Did anybody have any questions for our town administrator about this update?
Nope.
All right, we'll move on. Old business. Recommendations on municipal operations and specifically taking action and of course continuing discussion on removal of the selectmen's desks. Before we get into this, I wanted to ask our town administrator, is it okay if this is the only of the remaining recommendations we discuss tonight and we can continue at our next? Or did you want other things to be discussed?
Um, it's fine with me. I just have a quick update on passports since we've already talked about that. And there, I flagged three items that I think are relatively quick, but I mean, it's up to you.
All right, no, no, we'll hear. I didn't know.
Yeah, could you let us know what those are so that we can consider it for next week?
Sure, so. The, I have that updated on passports, vote on selectmen's desks issue. And then the three I have flagged are the correspondence and other items, limiting discussion on matters, and assigning a signatory. Those are all related to making the flow of the meetings a little bit more streamlined.
Okay. Well, I actually think that we can discuss those. I have no issue with that tonight. You said you had an update about the passports?
Yes. So again, thank you to Jocelyn Tavarez, our library director. She has asked employees of the library if they'd be interested in taking this on. Three individuals over there have said that they are. Thank you very much to those individuals. They are going to be discussing this at a trustees' meeting, which I believe is on August 9th. So unfortunately, it's a day after our next meeting, but that's in the works and we're working on that. So that's a really great, I'm very happy about that, actually. And thank you so much to the library staff for stepping up in this way.
Absolutely.
How often do they have training?
Um, I believe it's once a year. They have to go to the training and they sign up. I don't, Karen, do you know how often they have them? Every?
I think it's every six months, but they do have to attend the training once a year at least.
So how often is that training?
I believe it's once every, like every six months, so it's twice a year, I believe.
Twice a year.
It's offered.
Okay.
Different locations, departments in Boston.
Okay, so they could be trained if this is an agreement, they could be trained fairly soon.
I believe this fall.
And this is for an initial training? Do you have to do the training every year anyway? Okay.
Yep.
All right. And so this will be in parallel to passports here? I know this is kind of new.
So at first, definitely, there will be passports here. Not knowing how the trustees are feeling, I don't really want to commit to that. So we'll see what they say, what they come back with and formulate a plan that way. But I like the library, well, I love the library, everyone knows that. But I like the library for this specifically because they are open on two days. That Town Hall is not, which is Friday and Saturday, which could arguably be a great day for people to go get their passports taken care of. So I think once they do make the decision, we can all sit down and hash out the best way to offer this service, which is a very good one, a popular one, and a little bit of a revenue source for the town.
Absolutely. Fantastic.
Very good.
Does anyone have any additional questions regarding the update on passports? All right. So town admin, now, does this board, do we want to discuss? I mean, some of these are very like.
So they're quick little, yeah. So these three that I've highlighted are pretty cut and dry. If you're, you're okay with that, I'd like to talk about that before we get into the selectmen's desk. And I'm sorry, because I know you're here for the selectmen's desk, but you're in a comfy chair tonight, so it's fine. So we got new chairs. Good, they're showing them. Good.
Yes.
So these, since we are going to bi-weekly meetings, I know the concern from the public and the three of you has been, okay, how long are our meetings going to be now? So with that in mind, I had also made these parallel recommendations on how to kind of control what's going on in the meetings so that we can move, move along. So one would be correspondence instead of, we're in this practice of reading verbatim correspondence, such as there was a Keno hearing. We can quickly summarize that, the public, this is all public record anyway. So if somebody wanted to know, they can easily get the documents. In my, you know, future thinking, I would eventually like to see our packets online so that anybody following along at home could quickly, online, take a look at the packet and see exactly what we're talking about, which I think is helpful anyway, because a lot of times where.
We can start doing that next week. I mean, literally, yeah, that's not an issue.
Sorry, Karen, give me more work.
No, honestly, you know, Administrative Assistant Brady is consistent about sending us the packet on Tuesday afternoon. So it's not, it's very easy to, we're already uploading the agenda, so it's just another thing that we upload.
Upload, right.
Yeah, take a second.
And then that's helpful. So anything that we're looking at, they would have at their fingertips, essentially. So that's one. The other was limiting discussion on matters. So once all selectmen have had the opportunity to weigh in on whatever the agenda item is, if the conversation was continuing, and I write in here a 15-minute limit, that is just arbitrary. I'm just throwing that out there. I don't know what the limit is. But you could determine whether or not you want to establish a limit on discussion of a particular item to help kind of curve that, especially if we know that we're going to be kind of bringing this up at another meeting. We could delve into it later. So that's just something to think about. And the other item I have here tonight is assigning a signatory for items such as road cut permits, surgesage contracts, which does not include the award of bid, that still does need to be a vote. But the board could vote to have, you know, the clerk is going to be our signature, a signatory on surgesage contracts, or whatever the contract may be. And that wouldn't, after it was awarded at a meeting, that wouldn't have to come back here for signature and we could move that along.
Actually, we've already done that. And so the first person would be Brett. And so if you needed something signed this morning and Brett's not here, all you need is the, the first selectman who shows up, because the form that we signed said, in the absence of the chairman, either member could sign, and we all signed saying that, and that's what's on file.
Great. So does that translate to road cut permits?
It would, it would require, it would be everything that needs signature, with the exception of something that lists three names and titles. Then each one of us would have to sign in the appropriate place.
Like an appointment?
Well, yeah, an appointment would be a vote.
The other thing that we ran into, when we were doing the bond issue for the police station.
Yes.
A clerk has to sign, not the chairman.
Right. And that should be done at a meeting anyway, those kinds of items.
But so we do have that in place.
Okay, this is our third or fourth meeting in a row that has road cut permits on there. So are we all under this understanding that one of you can just sign them? Or can we assign a certain person that does road cuts?
I would say anyone that's available. That way, because that way, if you name somebody and they're on vacation.
Right.
You got, so, as I say, that, that form that's, that we all signed.
Yep, with the town account.
Covers that. So, and then also with road cut permits, like as long as Tom Ferry's okay and all the other department heads have been, have been contacted, that there's no utility in the road or there's no issue, that we could just do that behind the scenes instead of waiting and holding it up. Because arguably, National Grid is waiting for that permit, or whomever is waiting for that permit to put in a gas line or a driveway. So if we move to bi-weekly meetings, that's something to think about, keeping things moving.
As long as there's nothing statutory that we would have to comply with, I don't have a problem. And that way, as I say, the first selectman coming through the door.
Can just take care of it.
Yeah, could sign anything other than the restrictions that we talked about.
Great, well then just ignore that one. It's already happened.
So, for rest of ease, there is a background rule from appropriate departments, but as time it gets to you, we're all okay with it.
Okay.
So, and I have had calls a lot from people saying, where's my road cut? So I think it's appropriate. As long as it's statutory, it's okay.
It is, it is. Yep, I just, so that's good to know, so. They look awesome.
Those chairs look nice.
We are very proud of this, Diane.
So happy. I've never been so happy by furniture in my life.
And I just wanted to kind of explain for the public, when we said we were going to bi-weekly meetings, what we're discussing is the fact that we're going to have less frequent meetings and town business still has to continue. So what we're discussing tonight are ways that town business can continue and not be negatively impacted by less frequent meetings, so.
In a way, I interpret that two meetings a month is basically, this is an experiment. If it doesn't work for the public, then we're going to, we'll go back to the former decision that we have, so.
Yeah, we'll still have meetings as we need, right? If there was anything pressing, we're not going to say, no, coming in in two weeks.
If it means we're going to have a 12-hour meeting every two weeks, then that may be an issue.
Last summer, we were on the summer schedule and we just went week after week.
I remember, I remember, yeah, so.
But, whatever.
So this item, so we'll take care of that.
Yes.
So you want to just go back to the other two items before we get to the desk or we can just?
And these don't necessarily need a vote, but maybe does an agreement by the board that this is what you're going to do.
May I make a suggestion? We vote on a lot of things, okay, you know this, and it's probably hard for you to keep track as well. If you could just put this in a document, something like meeting, I don't even know what we would call it, just so we're aware, and not only just for us, but, you know, the future boards, that this was what we agreed to and if they want to change it.
This in a document or just what you're agreeing to now?
You know, we agreed to.
All the ones we agreed to.
Reference documentation instead of, so correspondence, this is what we, what we agreed to.
Like department heads, we're not changing, so we don't have to include that one.
Yep.
Yep, absolutely. I can do that.
Perfect.
And I wanted to mention the calendar, the four pages you gave us here.
Yes.
The schedule.
We're discussing that. That's under item C.
Okay.
As a separate discussion.
Okay.
So regarding the correspondence and other items, I actually think it's a great idea, because I usually end up having to read them all. So simply referencing the documentation, but public understanding that if you want to seek that letter that we're going to, that we're going to reference, it is online in the packet on our Board of Selectmen.
Absolutely. Or by request as well, for anything in the past that's not up there, of course.
But there'd be a hard copy at the meeting anyhow.
Sure, we'll all have it. I keep these. I know Karen keeps them, so.
That way, if we read it online and then say, that letter that came in, what was meant by this particular sentence? And we'll have it here and sit.
Absolutely.
Okay. That works for me.
So we're all okay with the referencing?
I'm in agreement also with that.
Limiting discussion on matters, before we discuss this, did you have anything else you wanted to say about it?
Other than, my only caveat's here, because I don't want to step on the toes of selectmen, they, once everyone has spoken at least once, right? That's the caveat. There's no time limit kicking in until after you've had the opportunity to say what you want to say. And then you can impose a deliberation time limit, I guess, on any one item, just to keep things moving along. I mean, sometimes you're always just going to agree to disagree, but you might want to keep on going and, you know, in the interest of time.
I think this is good, though, because what it will, what it, and I'm not, there's no, I'm not agreeing even tacitly to like a 15-minute limit. What I'm, what I want to say about this limiting discussion on matters is that I think it might kind of eliminate repetition and like, it'll force us to be more succinct and clear and to the point when we're trying to say something, which is ironic, because I wasn't just clear and to the point. That's why this might be a good thing.
The time's up.
Correct. I've expired.
It's like a little buzzer.
Oh, that thing that they have for the candidates night.
Do they have, yeah.
There's a timer.
I think I got gypped. I think I got gypped in time.
But Mr. McKeon does this at town meeting, when he goes from side to side. And if somebody says the same thing, he'll say, that, you know, points with me, did you have anything new? Or, you know.
Right, I agree, and it's important to keep, keep the meeting moving, especially something like town meeting, keep the meeting moving along.
But don't you think that we have some control over that, that if somebody, say, I'm repeating myself, that Mrs. Goulart or the chairman can say, we've heard this before, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
I'm not crazy about a time limit. I do think we have to cut down our talking sometimes on some of the issues, but to say a specific time and, you know, I know we're joking about a buzzer, but.
And that's why, I mean, that was just like, that was just thrown out there. I mean, 15 minutes doesn't mean anything to me. It doesn't have to be, but just to be cognizant and aware of our discussion times on any said item.
Okay. But I think what we can agree to tonight, or maybe not, I don't know how everyone feels, is sort of your procedure, where an issue gets presented, you speak, I speak, Selectman Goulart speaks, someone from the audience maybe has input, and then it comes back to us. And that's when we can, you know, sort of self-limit or, you know, point out that this is already, someone already said this, et cetera.
And that's kind of the way the ZBA did it, you know, all the board members get to speak, they let the public speak, and then we'd have any, any questions that we had, again, as a result of comments made, we could talk again. I think that's probably good practice for us that we.
I like the way the zoning board would.
Our meetings were about 45 minutes, just.
You literally, I loved it.
But you, you had a process where you all discussed the topic. You identified the three people on your board that were going to do this, and you named them so that, those are the three making the decision, which obviously, we don't have to deal with that here. But there was input from your other board members and then obviously the case you were hearing or the person. But I liked how, at some point, it's like, this, not the hearing, it's a discussion is now over, or some, you actually announced it, that discussion is over.
We would close the public hearing aspect of it.
Right, and then it's just the board deliberating, right?
So we get no more input from the public.
That's the same kind of idea. That's what I'm talking about, too.
After the public.
I, yes, public, I'm a very transparent, parent-kind person. I agree with public input. I agree with everybody having a conversation. But at the same time, you know, just as Mr. McKeon experiences, everybody wants to get up and say their piece, but it could be very much repetitious to the previous speakers. So I agree.
And he always asks for questions, because if somebody gets up and starts making da-da-da-da, and he'll say, is there a question? Because that's what he's looking for.
Right, so.
Yeah, I like the way the zoning did that. I remember attending some way back when, when Mr. Karen was the.
Mr. Karen.
Was the chairman. And he would, the whole board would talk, and if there were any town officials present, he would call on them next and then go to the public and, but it did it, moved right along.
That's my experience as well, that it goes, you know, the board, whoever the board is meeting, and any officials, town officials, elected officials in the audience, a kind of a order.
Yep.
So we'll agree, and again, this isn't like something we need to vote on, but we'll agree in terms of the procedure for the way the meetings are run, are we in agreement that we'll do, and I'm going to use the word limitless, but nobody get ideas about an hour or two hours, we'll do our initial discussion when the issue is presented? We will have the public ask questions, give comments, it'll come back to us, we will limit, and then we will vote or whatever we need to do, and then we'll be done with that, that particular agenda item. Okay, I think that's good. Is that okay with you, Madam Administrator?
Sure it is, it is. I'm just writing my notes.
Okay.
As the chair, as, as, as the chairman Goulart, we need to pass the control of that process, so.
Absolutely.
And I come from work, so I'm not, I love debating, I love politics, I love political science, but I also like to eat and go home and decompress before my day needs to start the next day. So I think this is great. I think it's a big improvement and I appreciate you giving us the suggestion, Madam Administrator. But also kind of keeping, being aware of the fact that we're going to, we could potentially have longer meetings, because they're twice a month, so I appreciate these suggestions very much.
Thank you, absolutely.
Did you have anything else regarding the recommendations?
No, so now, and just know, I will put all of this kind of together and then I think for the next meeting, I'll put a condensed version of this together so that you can, you know, know what's left, I guess.
All the stuff, for example, all the stuff we've discussed and said this is good.
Move off and have this adopted, like what we're going to do. And then I'll redo this so that you'll see what is still left to discuss.
Okay, perfect.
But we'll do that.
Perfect.
Thank you.
I have a request, and I saw this, it reminded me of it. Will you have a chance?
Yes.
For a future meeting, not necessarily the next one. I moved three times when I was at UMass. Physically, we had to move to other buildings because leases ran out and all that good stuff. What they would give us each time was, here's the room you're going to be in. This is your office, and it would be drawn, like the floor plan. It was completely empty. They would say, draw in how you want this configured. So what I'm asking you to do is, think of that room as being empty. The desks are gone. Put Karen in here, the files we need, the, whatever's going to be in there, the little table with the, whatever. And do a floor plan.
Sure.
So we have a general idea of, because if, if you move them all out and then it's like, well, you know what? That's not going to work.
Absolutely.
But anyhow, that's what we used to do, even before, even when we were still in the old space. They would make us do that, because they would move on the weekend and they would hand it to the movers and say, this is how you're going to set this room up, okay?
Sure.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to hear from the building commissioner. He has some ideas as to what to do.
Oh, absolutely, regarding the desks, absolutely.
I'd like to have some important, I had a conversation with him this afternoon. I know he has some ideas.
Absolutely. Mr. Commissioner, our floor is yours.
Last week, when I made the suggestion, I did, I sort of had a vision of how things would work in that room and accommodate both requirements, both from the selectmen's perspective and from administrative perspective. And back when, when we were discussing where the town administrator was going to go, we discussed putting a room within that room. But at that time, I felt the needs of the town administrator would far exceed the space that was available in that room, so we didn't like the idea. So I revisited that when we were discussing the needs today, where we'd want to remove desks, go down to one desk, give Karen some more space in the room, and I sort of revitalized that old idea about making a room within that room. In doing that, the selectmen would have their own private space. In it, we could fit a singular desk, three cabinets that could be locked, and some type of a system where Karen could put all of the documents that you need to look at in your space. You would then review those documents, do whatever you need to do, put them back in a secure location where Karen could retrieve them. It does sort of segregate the selectmen from Karen, but in my opinion, and I've had conversations through the years with selectmen, privacy sometimes is needed. You don't have any privacy right now. It usually came in this room for privacy. So with that said, it would, it would take, it would take care of the problem with a desk. So you'd be down to a singular desk, you'd have your own space, which would give you privacy if needed. And for Karen, we create walls based, that's much needed for cabinets. It would also clear out the center of the room, where we could put a row of back-to-back lateral files if needed, and she could work on both sides of it. So it would also give Karen the option to have some quiet space as well, which I think is important. When the phone stops ringing, you can focus on doing certain things. So that's something that we could do fairly expensively, fairly quickly. I think the whole thing, what I've talked about, could be done in two weeks. My vision, you'll have your own door in the hallway, which there was a door there previously. We could have the nameplates for the three current selectmen on the wall. If you so choose, you can establish office hours, they can be posted, so the public will know when they can have access to you personally.
Overlapping.
Right. And it won't be, it won't be so small that it's, you know, you feel claustrophobic. It's an appropriate-sized room. I plan to put at least a chair or two in there, so that if members of the public want to come in and speak with you, they would have access to that comfort. So I think it's a good plan, but of course, you know, I'm the born thought of it, so I'm a little biased.
So if you, if, just to expand on what I requested, if you work with Mallory, divide up that, that empty, that empty space over there, and then we'll all get to see what it is.
So, and I completely understand, because I'm, I have the gift that I can visualize and I already know what it's going to look like. But seeing it two-dimensionally is much different. So I would be happy to work with Mallory on that, so that we can show it to you two-dimensionally. And I'll actually give you the size, I'll put the desk in the room, chairs, and we can see how it works. I think with the three cabinets, with the, you have your privacy, you have a secure location for files. Karen and I discussed a plan that she could get you your documents, which quite frankly, right now, they're not secure. A lot of people go in and out of that room. But the only people who have access to that room will be the three of you and the two administration personnel. So I, I, I thought it would be an all-in-one situation.
I actually don't have much to say. I think that's a great idea. I think it's actually a compromise in between, you know, just throwing the desks out and, you know, having some sort of space that potentially someone could come and ask us a question.
And when we see the drawing before anything moves, that'll be good.
The only thing I did think of on Wednesday nights, when the three of you were here, that would be the only time that you all three of you won't have a place to sit down.
I could just come in here.
But you have this room. So, you know, we might want to be mindful of not having meetings right before. So if you wanted to come in, take your pack, package, go sit down quietly and look through it, we can just maybe be mindful that we all schedule meetings just before that. And in a couple of months, we'll have another meeting space downstairs, we have meeting space downstairs. So logistically, it should work fine.
I have a table, I mean. I just, the only comment I have is, I'm sorry, because Commissioner Aguirre was actually leading this last week and I totally missed the boat on what he was talking about. So sorry, thank you for explaining further.
I think he actually offered you prior to, but I was hoping he'd let me elaborate on my plan, but that's fine. It evolved and here we are today, so.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. I spoke to Jim earlier about this. He gave me an idea as to where the walls would be and everything else. We has, I have some concerns, but I, I think we worked it out, I think it's going to work out. But I like Mrs. Goulart to visually take a look at it.
When I said Carol's, I was thinking some kind of petition, you know, because of how offices are set up and like that. But if you've got the vision, I'm willing to look.
Absolutely.
And the floor plan will be good, because then we can each figure out, you know.
The only thing with the half walls of petitions is you don't really have your privacy.
No.
And I, I think that's important. You know, Karen and I spoke earlier, I can tell you that I probably have at least 100 times I've spoken privately. So, you know, the time does come up. And there are, there are taxpayers and the people of this community who want to see a selectman. So I, I think it would be a well-used room.
I would just ask, do we also work on a cost estimate with everything? So just to have in the back of your mind, and then we'll present the full package, I guess, to you.
And we should start thinking about what I was, you know, like I like. And we should start thinking about what I was, you know, like, I like being here on a Monday morning and a Wednesday morning, I'm not sure if, what Mrs. Goulart prefers.
I don't have any set schedules, so.
I don't either.
You know.
So I think we already, if this is gonna happen, then we should work out a schedule that, that way, we're not both here at the same time, but-
Absolutely.
But not only that, we can have a schedule that the public will know, that if they show up at town hall and say, "I wanna see a selectman," they won't get, nobody's gonna be here for the next whatever, you know.
Yep. Those would be things we would communicate with the public, so that they're not showing up when someone's not scheduled to be here.
And I like the idea of the office out, the names posted, the assessors have that, like, I like that, and the office hours next to the door, I mean, I do the same thing, so we have many means of communication. We'll certainly get this out to the public.
Absolutely.
I'm close enough to, if I get a phone call, can you come down here, somebody wants, I mean, that's not a problem.
Yep. All right, so we'll get some more concrete plans on that, and then we can take an official vote at that time, is that okay with my colleagues?
That's fine.
All right. Thank you very much for the, good work on that.
Can we have this ready for next week, you think? For the next, is that too much? No, it's okay if it's, okay.
He's doing office work this evening.
I know, sorry. Do it now! No one knows. Thank you very much.
I do also think it's important, and I know Mrs. Brady will probably agree, I think, as Mr. Commissioner said, it's also important for her, not so much to have privacy, you know, she's here at town hall, not in her house, but I do think she, having less interruptions, having me ask her for things while she's trying to get work done, I think this will decrease that, so I think it's a win-win. All right.
I'm looking forward to the day I come in, and I can see her at her desk, but not over the piles.
They're getting lower.
They are. I have noticed, too. Okay.
Good job.
Very good work. All right, so we'll move on, we're still on old business. B, second reading of the fuel-efficient vehicle policy. Madam Administrator, do you want to take us away, or do you want us to take turns?
I'll take this away, I am feeling talkative. So, I, this does not come under the correspondence thing, I think, I like the fact that we read our policies, however, maybe the time will come in the future that we post these online, and they are posted, and this happens to be posted outside my office door, in case you wanna take gander. Okay, Town of Dayton, oh, sorry.
One other thing, no, 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 it's okay. I just wanted to throw in, can we add the three readings before we adopt or vote on a policy as part of that, like, meeting procedure?
Oh, that procedural thing, sure.
Thank you, because that is a really nice thing. The public, they often don't have suggestions, but just the fact that they know that if they had one, we would listen to it, I think goes a long way. And I apologize, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Nope, no problem. All right, just writing notes. Town of Dayton Fuel-Efficient Vehicle Policy. The Town of Dayton is seeking a Green Community designation, and through this policy pledges to reduce fuel consumption and energy use by only purchasing fuel-efficient vehicles to meet this goal. Purpose and applicability: To establish a requirement that the Town of Dayton purchase only fuel-efficient vehicles for municipal use whenever such vehicles are commercially available and practicable. Further, this policy is adopted in order to make efficient use of municipal vehicles, minimize the cost of town operations to taxpayers, enforce environmentally responsible fleet maintenance, minimize the town's consumption of natural resources, to protect and preserve the natural environment, and to comply, comply with the D O E R Green Communities Program requirements. This policy shall apply to all departments of the Town of Dayton. Definitions: Combined City and Highway Miles per Gallon EPA Combined Fuel Economy. Combined fuel economy means the fuel economy from driving a combination of forty-three percent city miles and fifty-seven percent highway miles, and is calculated as follows: Combined fuel economy equals one over point four-three divided by city miles per gallon plus point five-seven divided by highway miles per gallon. Drive System: The manner in which mechanical power is directly transmitted from a vehicle's drive shaft to the wheels. The following codes are used to indicate drive systems: AWD (all-wheel drive), 4-wheel drive (automatically controlled by the vehicle's powertrain system), 4-wheel drive (drive-selectable 4-wheel drive with 2-wheel drive option), 2-wheel drive (2-wheel drive only). This makes more sense if you read it, I'm sure it sounds like gobbledygook when I'm saying it. Heavy Duty Vehicle: A vehicle with a manufacturer's gross vehicle weight rating of more than eight thousand five hundred pounds. Guidelines: All departments shall purchase only fuel-efficient vehicles for municipal use whenever such vehicles are commercially available and practicable. The Town of Dayton will maintain an annual vehicle inventory for all municipal vehicles and maintain a plan for replacing non-exempt vehicles with vehicles that meet, at a minimum, the fuel-efficient ratings contained in the most recent Criterion Four guidance, published by the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources Green Communities Division. The fuel efficiency ratings contained therein are based on the most recently published U.S. Environmental Protection Agency data on combined city and highway miles per gallon for vehicles. Based on 2010 data, vehicles must have a combined fuel economy no less than the following: 2-wheel-drive cars, twenty-nine miles per gallon; 4-wheel-drive cars, twenty-four miles per gallon; 2-wheel-drive minivan, twenty miles per gallon; 4-wheel-drive minivan, eighteen miles per gallon; 2-wheel-drive pickup truck, seventeen miles per gallon; 4-wheel-drive pickup truck, sixteen miles per gallon; 2-wheel-drive sport utility vehicle, twenty-one miles per gallon; 4-wheel-drive sport utility vehicle, eighteen miles per gallon. Note: Hybrid or electric vehicles in these classes will meet these criteria. Green Communities Criteria for Guidance must be checked for updates prior to purchasing new, new vehicles. Exemptions: The following vehicles for municipal use are exempt from this policy. Heavy-duty vehicles. Examples include fire trucks, ambulances, and some public works, work trucks that meet this policy's definition of heavy-duty vehicle. Police cruisers, passenger vans, and cargo vans. Fuel-efficient models are not currently available for these vehicles. However, we commit to purchasing fuel-efficient police cruisers, passenger vans, and cargo vans when they become commercially available. Police and fire department administrative vehicles are not exempt and must meet fuel-efficient requirements. To purchase a newer replacement vehicle for municipal use under one of these exemptions, the department slash division's staff responsible for fleet management and/or fleet procurement must request an exemption approval by the Board of Selectmen. Inventory: The following information shall be included in a vehicle inventory list, and said list shall be updated on an annual basis and provided to the State's Green Communities Division. Model, make, model year, month, month, year, purchased, drive system, which would be 2-wheel drive, 4-wheel drive, or all-wheel drive, whether it's a heavy-duty vehicle, whether it's exempt or non-exempt, miles per gallon rating, and vehicle function. Note: Departments may use EPA combined miles per gallon estimates or actual combined miles per gallon. Fuel-efficient vehicle replacement plan: All non-exempt vehicles shall be replaced with fuel-efficient vehicles that adhere to the most recent Green Communities Criterion Four Guidance. Vehicles shall be replaced when they are no longer operable and will not be recycled from one municipal department or division to another, unless the recycled replacement vehicle meets the fuel efficiency ratings outlined in this policy. In addition, when replacing exempt vehicles, the function of the vehicle will be reviewed for potential replacement with a more fuel-efficient vehicle, including a fuel-efficient non-exempt vehicle. The Town of Dayton will review the vehicle inventory list on an annual basis, along with the Green Communities Criterion Four guidance, to plan for new acquisitions as part of planning for the new fiscal year budget. Questions and enforcement: To ensure that all vehicle purchases and replacements are consistent with this policy, the Board of Selectmen or its designees shall approve all vehicle purchases to replace any exempt or non-exempt vehicle for municipal use upon consultation with the department's staff responsible for fleet management and/or fleet procurement. This policy is enforced by the chief administrative officer and/or his or her designee. And we do have an updated one, not with content, but with the appropriate signatures, because the school has to adopt this as well, and I believe their meeting's August fourteenth.
I'll be there, I have to go anyway. Okay, thank you very much, Madam Administrator. And last but not least, for old business, review and discuss the proposed selectmen's bi-weekly meeting schedule. Madam Administrator, you have the floor.
So, at the last meeting, you had wanted to see kind of what these meetings would look like on paper, and when they matched up with a holiday or not, and kind of derailed everything. So, I gave you actual calendars, so you could see and determine whether or not you wanted to change anything around. Once we decide what the meetings are, I fully intend to make a new list, and actually list out the dates, and that way, things would be, all these dates would be advertised, and also, people would know when the clerk and treasurer collector's office is open, because it would mirror the schedule. Okay.
I do have one edit.
Yes.
You, you wrote at the top, second and third Wednesday, first September, you did second and fourth, which is actually what we voted, however, in October, you did first and fourth.
Oh, I know, I did October intentionally, and I'll let you know why, but you're right, it's supposed to be second and fourth.
Which, which you did, so I was confused.
Sorry about that. And October is a special circumstance, so when we get to October, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Okay, so, second and fourth Wednesday meeting schedule, so that would leave us, currently, right now, we're scheduled for September fifth. That was the decision made back in, I think, May, when we decided to go to a summer schedule. So, I'm actually seeking clarification on whether or not we're moving that meeting to the twelfth, or if we are gonna have it. So that one, as you can see, lines up with Labor Day, which we are closed on Labor Day, is a federal holiday. So, those would be for September. Do you wanna just go through the whole thing and?
Yeah, well, we're, we're almost done.
So, October, I know, it's only four months. October, the reason the second one is not there is because I myself am out of town. Before I was hired, I had been invited to be in my friend's wedding, and it happens to be in Florida, so I am, her wedding is actually the ninth, which is a Tuesday, and a little strange. So, I will not be back here for that meeting. So, I'm just proposing that we do some other combination, whether that be the first Wednesday or the seventeenth, that's up to you. I also put in this little corner, proposed town meeting dates for, for the fall town meeting, so we can, might, might as well call that and get that on paper, potential, and then we'll work it out with what's available at the schools. And again, we're closed on Columbus Day, which is Monday, a holiday up here.
And I have no issue with having the meeting, you, now that you tell me this, you had told me this a long time ago, so I do remember, I have no issue with having it the first Wednesday for October.
And she's not willing to change the wedding day?
So you can come to our meeting on a, on a second Wednesday?
I hope she hasn't watched this, but she said to me, she goes, "Well, is that a problem?" I'm like, "Uh, take the week off." Yeah, a little bit, but.
Give us a box where you got notes. Would you put in a proposed sign-the-warrant date?
Oh, sure.
Because that relates to when we're gonna meet.
Sure, absolutely. So, so when you receive this and it's final, are you requesting it to be in this kind of format, where you'd have the calendar?
Well, for the month of October, when we finalize, we'll finalize town meetings before then, but-
You'd like to know all the dates?
Opening and closing dates, but definitely the meeting date when we have to sign the warrant, because if by any chance, it is the tenth, we realize you're gonna be away, we would meet the tenth, sign that warrant, because statutorily, we have to. So it won't be a problem, but, but we don't know those dates yet.
Mm-hmm. Okay. That's a good point. Thank you, Selectmen Goulart.
And the other thing, these proposed dates, I think they got something to do with when elections are held, Sue would know.
Right, this I just did, what did I do, the Tues, no, no, I did a Thursday, because it was around that time, I'm just trying to mirror what you did previously, and I think you did the fourth Thursday.
And I'm just saying, I'm just thinking of these things that we gotta consider when we set the dates.
Yep, my process is, I, when we have a potential date, I email the moderator and the town clerk and town council, and then we work out the dates here with what's available, what works for everybody, and then we set it. Make sure everybody's, who needs to be there can be. November is where we get a little tricky, so obviously, Election Day is on Tuesday, that's just me being politically sciency, political sciency. Veterans Day, we observe on Monday, the twelfth. We would have a meeting on the fourteenth, which would be the second Wednesday, and then the twenty-eighth would be the fourth Wednesday. I got a question about town hall being closed on the twenty-first, which is the day before Thanksgiving. The union contract reads that if a holiday is on the, a scheduled day off, it is recognized for the previous workday.
That affects the union contract people, but this ought, the, we don't meet that night anyhow.
Right, but is town hall supposed to be closed that day?
If it falls, that will, yes, because that's been part of the complaint about the working schedule, yes, it has, but for the people in this building, now, other people coming under that contract are working that day.
Because they end up getting the twenty-third off, like the library, for instance.
Yes, they, this, yes.
Okay, but I just wanted to make sure that I was interpreting this, and we're supposed to be closed that day.
So, we won't, so we will not be meeting, no selectmen's meeting on the twenty-first, and town hall will be closed.
Close that day.
Yes.
Okay, so that will be on my schedule here. Okay, and December, so, the way December falls, and it was a good thing to do this, Nancy, because you had this idea about seeing where holidays fall, and it was a good exercise. The second meeting in December would be the twenty-sixth of, of December, and I didn't know if you wanted to change that around. So, we could meet back-to-back, we could meet the twelfth and the nineteenth, we could meet the fifth and the nineteenth.
I think the twelfth and the nineteenth. I, I don't know how my colleagues feel, but I doubt any of you are gonna wanna be here on the day after Christmas, just a shot in the dark here.
Because that will also take care of the January thing.
Exactly.
A week later.
Yep.
Okay, and so, Christmas Eve is a half-day for town hall, and then we'd be closed Christmas Day and back to business on the twenty-sixth, but, okay.
Now-
That makes sense, too, because we'd be posting agenda, we'd be posting it on the nineteenth, I think, so that would be tough.
So you'd be, Karen, would you be sending us the agenda Christmas Eve before you leave that half-day? And then the packet on Christmas? No, I think moving it to the nineteenth is solid.
Yeah, all right.
Now, Madam Administrator, were you needing us to agree to the schedule as prepared this evening?
Yes, and then I would like to put it out there and get everybody on board, and to know, not on board, but to, you know, aware of what the meeting schedule is. Tonight, we did run into a little bit of a snafu of people were looking to pay their taxes, but because we're on this, like, off-meeting night, the town, the town clerk and the treasurer's office wasn't open, so I'd like to get this out as early as possible, so people can plan for those types of things.
Absolutely.
So this will be posted on the website, this will be available, we'll post this with the town clerk, it'll be on my calendar, excuse me, on my board outside, and anywhere else I can think of, I'll throw it on Facebook, and as like a file or something, so it'll be out there.
I have no further comments, Selectmen Pacheco.
Yes, the September fifth meeting, do we need to vote not to have that meeting? Because we've already apparently voted-
We voted to establish the, as I recall from last week, we would have to default to Mrs. Brady, but I believe we voted to start the second and fourth Wednesday on September twelfth specifically, so we might need to-
So I just don't know if you wanna have the fifth, that's all.
I personally don't think we should have the fifth, since we wanna start, but I just wonder if we have to rescind that meeting, because apparently, it's been voted on.
We're just not gonna go.
You're telling me right now, and I'm not gonna, not gonna schedule it.
I'm just not gonna be there, Selectmen Pacheco.
So, we're, we're gonna end up meeting August, so we have public, here you go, August eighth, August twenty-second, and then September twelfth, that's gonna kick off the bi-weekly or so meetings, with a couple of differences because of the schedule, so September twelfth, September twenty-sixth, October third, October twenty-fourth, November fourteenth, November twenty-eighth, December twelfth, and December nineteenth.
Perfect.
Okay, and then did you-
Selectmen Goulart, did you have any, I'm sorry, I didn't ask you.
No, we've already, we already, oh, what's the date of the primary election?
Oh, we just did this, right?
It was September, oh.
September sixth, does that make sense? No?
That's a Thursday.
Was it Thursday or Tuesday? Was it Thursday or Tuesday?
It's, I think it's a Tuesday.
It's the 4th.
It's posted.
It's the 4th. I know it's the 4th. I couldn't remem- I don't remember now.
We signed it last week.
I know, it's definitely the 4th.
Got the T, knew it was a T and an even number.
Good call. State primary is September the 4th, okay.
And then did you wanna vote on a potential special town meeting date, and then we'll do the work on the end to make sure that the room's available and people can attend, or do you wanna just hold off at that time?
For that, and I, um, I'll default to my colleagues, but for that, I feel like we should talk to Sue about the timing and, and all that, just before we even do that, which we'll do that and we'll be proactive and do it before, earlier than we've done it in the past.
I know election dates and town meeting dates, there's state laws, so...
I think it's, all right, sure, we'll, um, we'll speak with Sue about it, and then I will put this together and...
This, end of this month at our 22nd meeting, once we have that solidified.
Have this scheduled.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I'm gonna put this together in a coherent kinda manner.
Was it today at noon time that we closed the warrant for the special?
Yes.
Coming up?
Correct.
Okay, so that's all done, okay.
That is all gone. Actually, our next item.
All right. No, I don't have anything, I think we've covered it.
Okay.
I mean, all my questions been answered.
Do we wanna, uh, vote on accepting this schedule as prepared tonight, as we discussed, I should say?
Why don't we wait one more time, so she can check these other dates, 'cause depending upon what she finds out...
For town meeting?
Yes, we may have to, we may have to move something.
There's no rush.
Yeah.
Yep, we'll do it next week.
And Sue will know, because she's, yeah.
They have that little book.
So, so, um, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion that we, um, revisit the proposed biweekly schedule, uh, at a future meeting.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, uh, discussion.
Oh, Karen, would you insert biweekly selectmen's meeting schedule? We all know what schedule we're talking about.
It's not technically biweekly, it's two times a month.
I know, I keep saying, there's no way to say it.
The twice monthly.
All right, so let's change biweekly to, um...
Twice monthly.
It's two times a month.
Yeah, twice monthly.
There's no, like, nice way to say it.
How about if we just say to, uh, we'll revisit the new meeting schedule for the Board of Selectmen at a future meeting? That way, if it's ready next week or the meeting after, whenever, you get everything.
I'll second that motion, again.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the motion passes. And under new business, we have the special town meeting warrant, and we're gonna start with placing articles on the warrant, Madam Administrator.
No surprise here, we have one warrant article for our special town meeting, it is the schools, I think we're in the habit of reading them, is that right?
Sure.
Um, so Article 1, "To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds a sum not to exceed $804,000 to be combined with previously allocated funds as voted on Article 28 of the June 4th, 2018, and in parentheses, June 13th, 2018, annual town meeting, and to be expended by the school committee for the purchase and installation of six modular classrooms and any related equipment at the Dayton Elementary School, or to take any other action relative thereto." And I just have a couple of points on this. So this has been approved by Town Council. He recommended that we hearken back to our June town meeting and reference that, so that, that there's no question that the funds are gonna be combined, um, but because, so legally, that is known as the June 4th, 2018 annual town meeting, even though our vote didn't take place until June 13th. But that's why that date is put in parentheses, if anyone's wondering why that is, but, um, he's okay with this. I crafted a motion, um, that isn't really final yet, even though he did look at it, and it, it, the finance committee has to meet, they're meeting on August 8th next week at 6:30, and they'll be voting on the funding source for this and their recommendation. After that meeting, we can craft a motion and, uh, be prepared, but it's sort of, they just need to insert the blank, 'cause I, I did run something by Town Council.
So are we waiting to vote to place this on the warrant?
No, no, we have to do this, we have to, um, yeah, we have to post this on the 7th or by the 7th, we don't have another meeting until then, so, um, this is why we're having this meeting.
The fierce urgency of now, all right.
I just wanna say, you must read the entire warrant.
Mm-hmm, that's the next.
Oh, okay.
Not just, not just the motion, so you start out with Bristol SS.
Sure.
Oh, I see, okay.
You just, I need you to vote to place the warrant on the, the warrant item, on the article on the warrant, yes.
Article on the warrant, okay.
That's all I was reading.
And then we'll have, so we will eventually...
Read the whole thing.
After you get the info, okay.
Right next, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize the town administrator to place the article for the six modular classrooms at the rate, uh, at the amount of $804,000 on the upcoming special town meeting warrant for Tuesday, Octo- oh, yeah, August 21st, 2018.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
There were no other articles submitted, sorry, I just thought I shouldn't say that.
No, I appreciate, no, yeah, I was actually gonna ask.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, the motion passes. Signed, special town meeting warrant, Madam Administrator, do you wanna read?
Right, so I was gonna say, because we're on this little expedited, talk about expedited permitting, right? Uh, because we're on this, uh, now we can read the, the warrant. Would you like me to do that? I, I, it doesn't matter, I can do it.
You can, you're on a roll tonight.
I'm talking it today. Okay, Town of Dayton Special Town Meeting Warrant, Tuesday, August 21st, 2018, Bristol SS, "To either of the constables of the Town of Dayton and the County of Bristol, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Dayton qualified to vote in elections and town affairs to meet in the Dayton Rehoboth Regional High School on Monday, the 21st day of August, 2018, at 7:00 PM, then and there to act on the following articles." These. Article 1, "To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds a sum not to exceed $804,000 to be combined with previously allocated funds as voted on Article 28 of the June 4th, 2018, parentheses, June 13th, 2018, annual town meeting, and to be expended by the school committee for the purchase and installation of six modular classrooms and any related equipment at the Dayton Elementary School, or to take any other action relative thereto." Article 2 is "To act upon any other business that lawfully may be introduced at said meeting. And you are directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof at each of the post offices, at the Town Hall, and at the main fire station, all in said Dayton fourteen days at least before the time of holding said meeting. Hear of, fail not, and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of meeting as aforesaid. Given under our hands this first day of August, in the year of our Lord 2018, and of the Independence of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, 242nd." Board of, oh, I do this, too. Board of Selectmen, Brett R. Zagravas, Ph.D., Chairman, Kenneth J. Pacheco, Clerk, Nancy J. Goulart, Member, a true copy, attest, Town Clerk, Susanna Madziris, Madiris, posted as directed, Constable.
All right. Do we wanna make a motion to sign the warrant this evening?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we sign the warrant, uh, for the special town meeting on Tuesday, August 21st, 2018, as read.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion tonight? Hearing none, let's take it to a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes. And this, do we need ju- just one copy is sufficient?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend to the town that they approve this, um, Article 1.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, uh, discussion, I just wanted to thank my colleagues for feeling it was important to let people know. I have no further discussion, anybody else? Hearing none, let's take it to a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes, your Board of Selectmen, uh, is firmly in support of this article. So, we have heard you loud and clear.
This will be posted, um, we'll probably get it done sooner, but by August 7th.
Perfect, thank you very much, Madam Administrator.
See you there, absolutely.
And thank you, everybody who had a role to play. I know, Mr. Commissioner, you worked with the school district, um, on the modular units, so I appreciate everybody's effort. Takes a village, folks. Okay, uh, next on the agenda this evening under new business is to approve the change order for the Dayton Police Station. Did you wanna introduce this, Madam Administrator?
I don't have too much to say, the building committee, um, I'm sorry, I should call, the Police Station Building Committee has reviewed this, there was a question, and the, um, tower construction, like, our OPM, sorry, uh, did respond back, so I just wanna make sure I say the right number here. So there's one for $18,398.48, and there's another for $773.06, so...
And just so the public is aware, the $18,398.48, uh, is for transformer relocation, the $773.06 is for roofing modification.
And as Administrator Mrs. Brady just pointed out to me, there's a giant star next to this, I'm sorry.
The total.
The total is $19,171.54, and it is made up of the two changes just described, sorry.
Right, and I'm the one who asked for that, because when it was emailed to me, it says change proposal number one, revision one, and I saw the 18, and then I looked at the next page, and it's the 77306, which is change proposal number three. Where's change proposal number two?
I'm sorry, but he wrote that it's just...
I only have two.
CO number one is made, he says right here...
We've got two, but they're not numbed, my question, not only is the dollar amount, because I realize if you add the two together, it's what's on the front page.
Mm-hmm.
Change orders or proposals are usually in sequence, so my question is, where is two and what was it? Unless it's a no-cost change order...
Oh, okay, I know what you're referring to.
Now, if it's a no-cost change order, it should be listed, there should be a page, and it should just say, uh, change order, no additional cost, and whatever it is, 'cause these tell you exactly what it's for, so that's all I'm saying.
And what does the rev. 1 mean, must be revised?
Revised, yeah, I'm assuming.
So honestly, I didn't catch that, that's a good catch, do you want us to figure that out before voting?
I think we, we need to know what number two is, um, when we used to do school building projects, even, even if the, a change is a change, some have dollars, some don't have dollars, but we had to log them in, because when we did the final report to school billing assistance to get our final payment, you had to account for everything. And the other thing, too, was our building committee, even if there were no dollars, had to know what the change was, even though there was no cost, because they had to approve it.
And you need to, yeah, absolutely.
So we just need to know this, the, where's two, or what, what was two for?
Do they, they need this done tonight?
I mean, I don't have any objections to it, it's just that...
Yeah, no, I, I understand that. Can we take a vote and have it be contingent upon whatever?
Or to get, to get a report on change order two next week?
Sure.
Something like that?
Yeah, uh, uh, oh, yeah, we can vote on this, I don't have a, but do the, these, these two numbers add up, it's just...
Oh, I'm glad you brought that up, though, 'cause I actually didn't notice the numbering at the top, so I appreciate that.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we approve change proposal number one, revision one, uh, for relocation of the transformer and associated primary and secondary services for the new police station in the amount of $18,398.48, and change proposal number three for modifying the antenna detail in the amount of $773.06 for a grand total of
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
I do wanna question or understanding.
Sure.
So this is not additional monies that the ta- taxpayers have to provide, this is...
We have, this is coming out of contingency.
Correct.
If we ever get to the point that we spend the contingency and there's more, that's a whole nother ballgame.
Yes, well...
Yes, we're, we're within the budget.
Yeah, yeah, no.
Don't worry, we'll have to vote on the night, on raising a parade.
I just wanna go on record, I'm not, I'm personally not in favor of spending one more cent.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Of the taxpayers' money for this, so this is already money that's, that's already...
Built into what was a, from the debt exclusion vote.
It's built into it, yes, yes.
Yep. Good question, Selectman Pacheco. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's take it to a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes. Uh, next on the agenda under new business is ratified police chief contract. Uh, this was discussed in executive session, um, last week, and I'm gonna throw this over to you, if you had anything else, uh, before we continue our discussion.
I do not, it was voted, this is just ratifying, um, the chief's contract, and, uh, I guess I'll kick it back over to you for vote to ratify and signatures. The police chief didn't sign it.
Okay. Colleagues, discussion.
I'll make a...
Oh, I'm sorry, no, no, you can...
I was gonna make a motion that we ratify this contract that we discussed at the executive board meeting.
I will step down and second that motion, uh, discussion.
Um, I think we should table action on this tonight, because, um, I got the contract last week, um, I didn't know the whole thing was open again, because the last time that you and I were involved in this, uh, Mr. Zagravas, was when, uh, the chairman was doing the negotiating and asked us to vote the stipend for the communications center. Um, the reason I'm asking this is because I have looked into the existing contract, this contract, and some events that happened in town historically over the past couple of years. The most, the most recent thing I will point out is that when we did our appointments in June, we appointed the chief for one year. This contract is for two years, you can't issue a contract for a one-year appointment. Going back further, this has come up in the past, and a legal opinion was sought from DOR. We have a legal opinion in writing from DOR that we cannot issue a contract to a police chief or a fire chief in excess of one year, and that's on file, that's, um...
Where is this on file?
I actually don't have that, and I was under the...
The Department of Revenue, this, this has come up before, and, uh... So, it is on file, I saw it, and somewhere in this stuff, if it's not here, it's home. I've got a copy of the, oh, here it is, right here, sorry. This was issued by John Gannon, Tax Counsel, Bureau of Municipal, Municipal Finance Law, Division of Local Services. The date of this is actually 2012, this is the last time it came up, so, let me give you enough copies of this. All right, so, this, this four.
Thank you.
Um, but it specifically talks about multi-year contracts, and it also, it even mentions the contract for the highway superintendent, um, so anyhow, that's why they haven't, it, multi-year contracts have come up in the past before, and, um, they haven't been issued because the town has followed this legal ruling, so that's one issue. As far as the stipend for the oversight of the communications center, um, going back to, I'm thinking Mr. Costa was the, on the Board of Selectmen at the time, the oversight of the communications center is a joint position held by the fire chief and the police chief working together, and the former chief, not Mr. Mi- not Mr. Mi- not Michael McGee, the former chief, and the current chief oversaw the operation of that department up until, um...
A series of events.
An event happened, when that event happened, the chief said, the fire chief said he did not want to, to have that responsibility, because this event went on for a period of time, so, uh, the current chief, police chief, was given an extra $75 a week. Now, the first $75 a week that were, uh, they were actually offered, or they were paid 275 a month, I believe, in their pay, in their base pay. Then it changed from 275 a month, somewhere along the way, to $75 a week, so, and it was in the base pay, so each year, that 75% has been increased by, I'm assuming it's 2%, because I think that's what the raises have been over the years. So, when this circumstance arose, the current police chief was given an extra $75 a week outside of his base pay, because now he was having supervision of the, that department. Now that we have a new fire chief, and, uh, let me say a new permanent fire chief, um, I personally believe that position should be offered to him, it's about $3,900 a year, and since it wa- goes way back to when the job was created, and except for this event, it would still be going on, I think the current fire chief should be offered the opportunity to have, uh, co-oversight, uh, management of communications. Now, if the current chief says, "I don't think so," I mean, that's a different issue, "But I'm hesitant to approve the contract as it's currently written, because I don't think he's been approached," and, and I think this is, I mean, it's almost $4,000, it's a lot of money, and it would affect his base pay, which means retirement, so I think we need to look at that. So I think we need to look at that. That's as far as I can go tonight. So, that's what I'm talking about.
If I may make a comment on this, D O R.
I have a question, actually. So how do we know if our particular police chief is subject or not subject to civil service?
I would like to comment this. So, we are not a civil service community.
Oh, so.
So, we don't have civil.
Read that line for us, for the public.
Where are you there?
If the chief is not subject to civil service, the governing statutes provide for an appointment annually or a term not exceeding three years.
Right. So what this particular municipality is not able to commit expenditures unless.
All right, but you're going to read the next, excuse me, you're going to read the next sentence. Without some clear indication from the statute that a multi-year binding contract is authorized, we think that the annual appropriation limit, you're talking about the money you raise and appropriate, or however you fund this position, under G L forty-four thirty-one, still governs. However, the term of office is based on the local election to grant an annual or greater term of up to three years, and would be a reasonable period for a contract, were it to be interpreted to allow multi-year contracts. So this man is saying, on this, on, his legal opinion is, we can't issue multi-year contracts for those particular positions. Now, we have issued multi-year contracts, because they specifically say in the law, we can do it. So, all I'm saying is, this is what the town Board of Selectment has relied on since 2012.
So, if I could just answer that?
Madam Minister.
All right. I am under the impression that our current fire chief, Chris McGee, does have a three-year contract. So just to put that out there. What this is saying, and this is with any municipal contract, anything at all, the town cannot commit expenditures for future years under very strict parameters. So, and, I mean, I have lots to say about this, but, so, offering a contract to an individual can be a three-year contract. However, it is binding on town meeting.
Contingent, like contingent.
Right, a town meeting has to fund it for those subsequent years. There are four exceptions to that made by the Municipal Modernization Act. One is town administrator, one is town accountant, treasurer collector, and I believe assessor. I might, I'm not a hundred percent on that, but I think it's the assessor. And Municipal Modernization Act made that change. That was a big deal. So, of course, any contract that says binding on town meeting funding is defunct unless town meeting funds it, regardless of any statutory protection. But what D O R is telling us here in this document is that, with respect to the police chief, chapter forty-one, section one oh eight oh, which is the police chief chapter, authorizes a special contract but makes no mention of any general time period for such a contract. So we could do three. That's the general term. Again, I believe that the contract for him before the one year was a three-year. It was not?
I'm not aware, I'm not aware we've ever issued one, because, and that's why, I was not on the board then, but I can, it was probably at a finance committee meeting, I had heard about this. And I'm not aware that we, we have issued one to him. And if we have issued one to the current fire chief, now, we appointed him for a year.
Well, that's actually one of my recommendations, that if you have a contract with somebody, that will always prevail. A collective bargaining agreement is always going to prevail over any other policy that might be in place. It always just prevails. So likewise, if you have a contract with an individual, that's going to prevail. And it is, we, it's municipal finance law, you cannot commit the town unless it's specific, you know, obviously you're committing the town for the police station, you committed the town for me, there are specific statutory requirements. So, if you did offer him a multi-year contract, and town meeting decided not to fund the police chief line, you wouldn't have a police chief. He'd be out of a job July one. We wouldn't have a police chief.
But that's why I'm referring to this other statement. Without some clear indication from the statute that a multi-year binding contract is authorized, we think, that's D O R, that the annual appropriation limit still governs, which we all agree on. However, the term of office is based on local election to grant annual or greater term up to three years. So, if the term of office is based on the local election to grant an annual or greater term of up to three years, and would be a reasonable period, so forth and so on. So, all I'm saying is, this is what has prevailed in the town, and I think we need to look at it before we vote to approve the contract.
I defend what this is saying. I agree, you cannot commit the town to expenditures for future years. I agree with that. What I disagree with is the town's ability to enter into a multi-year contract. You do have the authority to do that, and you have done so.
But, but what he's saying, no clear indication from the statute, that's what my concern is. I realize this is, this is, it's a legal opinion, this is what the town has operated under during this period of time. We've all of, we've always followed D O R directives, and that's another thing. And the, as I said, I did get a copy of this, so you could all see it, and to see why I'm questioning this. The, so that, that's my concern about a multi-year contract. I would think before we actually made that change, since the town practice has been, at least since 2012, six years, we run this by town council. Now, if he tells us, "You've got to do this, or you can't do that," that's over, it's done for me, but.
Wasn't the contract already run by town council? The police chief's contract was already run by town council?
I don't think so.
No.
I just got it last Wednesday night.
Oh, we had it, we had it back in March.
That's actually not, no, this had been presented when Selectman Taylor was still here.
I thought we had already approved it.
March, and then again on May ninth.
A two-year contract?
Correct.
I got to tell you, I never saw it, because when I saw, I would have questioned it then.
You've got to check your emails, so I can go.
No, it was presented at a meeting.
I got to tell you, if it was sent to the town of Dayton, then that's why I didn't get it. I still can't get into that website.
It was presented here, at a meeting, and, you know, we did, we discussed it. We discussed it. I remember the conversation about two years, because it, he looked at me and he said, "How'd you get him to do a two-year contract?" And I said, "I asked him."
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, it was discussed.
But you understand.
I understand your point.
He's, let me put it this way, a multi-year contract has been requested before. It was denied based on this. Now, the, the individual is aware of that, so I'll just leave it at that. Now, as far as governance, governance or oversight, or whatever you want to call it, of the communications center, to the best of my knowledge, the board never voted to change that. As I said, there was that circumstance, which I'm not getting into tonight. But now that, that's behind us, we have a permanent fire chief, that stipend is like three thousand nine hundred dollars, and I think it needs to be offered to him, because right now, the government, governance of that department, as it was put in by the Board of Selectment, and I'm trying to find out when that happened, but I think Frank Costa was on the board, which would have been before 2007. The current fire chief should be asked, first of all, informed about this, and asked if he's willing to serve.
I understand.
There would be no additional cost to the town, because the fire, the police chief right now has the original money in the contract, his, he's being paid that. The additional stipend that he was paid to take over when the other chief stopped doing it, is actually money that could be paid to the current chief as part of his base pay. So he will also, going forward, get the benefit of the annual increase, assuming it's two percent or whatever it is, because down the road, it's, and if it, it will continue to increase as part of his base pay. That's an important benefit, when you add up all your years of service and you're getting ready to retire.
I understand that, but it also, it compounds a stipend that you set as a fee, I mean.
It doesn't compound it.
It's always increasing every year.
Oh, well, the reason I'm saying that is because, again, when this was set up, I wasn't here, but that's how they did it. So, since it's already being done for one individual, if the other individual agrees to this, they would have to receive it under the same condition.
Okay.
You know, I'm just looking at the fairness of this whole thing.
But do we know, is, yeah, do we know if this is part of his contract, a prior contract, going back to when Frank Costa was on the board, that?
I have no idea about that.
There was money actually put into his salary?
I have heard that, but I think even if, even if the chief, exactly, he's asking for this now.
He agreed to that contract.
I mean, it's almost a moot point, because what he's requesting is a certain amount, and that's what's before you. Whether or not you want to give that is what is on the table.
I will say, I, I respect everybody's opinion, I've heard the argument, so I'm ready to decide. Does anybody have anything new?
Yep.
I have serious reservations if we don't offer this to the current fire chief, because the, when it was set up by the Board of Selectmen. Other than that particular instance, when the existing police chief had to take over, there has been no vote of the board to change that authority. And with a, with a new chief, it's not fair to not at least offer it to him. If he says, "No, I don't want any part of it," that's fine, but, I mean, we're sitting here talking about it publicly tonight. I want the new chief to be treated fairly, and to not even offer it to him, inform him about it. It could have been when his, and I wouldn't be surprised, because this is a historical old thing, when the current fire chief's contract was written, the person who wrote it was not aware of this. So, that's why I think it would be wise for us to table this tonight, talk to the fire chief, find out how he feels about it, and then act accordingly.
Any further discussion?
I just have a point of clarification. Did you say that the, the police chief has been in charge of the communications center since 2007?
No, 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 no.
Okay, that's off.
Prior to, the reason why I'm saying it was prior to 2007, because I believe it was when Mr. Costa was Selectman, and I replaced him on the board. So it was before that. It was before my time.
Okay.
And I think the reason, I kept thinking, "How do I know this? How do I know this?" And I think it was because it came up at a finance committee meeting.
Okay.
Of discussing budgets or some such thing. But all of this, all of this information that we're talking about, who got paid what, what, what did the contract say, that's on file here. We can get that.
It's sitting right here, yep.
Any further discussion?
Well, I'm just concerned that we're waiting, we actually got the contract in front of us. We discussed it at executive board meeting last week, and now this information's coming up, that stuff that's been on file all this time.
Mm-hmm.
I'm a little troubled by that.
I am, too. And had I gotten that contract, and I would have remembered it in red and black, because it's, the one I got last week is, got red and crossed out stuff, because last week I said, "This is a two-year contract." I knew that, I knew we had not issued more than one-year contracts from the days when I was on the board before. The, again, I will say, had this information been known at the time, I believe it would have been included. To move ahead with this contract and not contact the current fire chief, I believe is wrong. It's unfair. It creates, it creates a bad situation, because sitting on the books somewhere in the minutes, there's an action taken by a Board of Selectmen that established the coverage. And the, the change was only made temporarily because of an event.
So, oh, I'm sorry.
So when was the contract?
I feel like we're, we're kind of going in circles, so.
Well, this is a.
New information. No, I understand.
This is new information. So when was the fire chief's contract approved by the board?
October 2017. I was not, I don't know if I, maybe I was hired, but I hadn't started yet, so that was before me. I didn't have a part in it.
Was that brought up then?
Nope.
No, we, we saw the contract when it was ready to sign. We, we did not negotiate that contract.
No, I, I get all of that.
I saw it beforehand.
But the Board of Selectmen approved it, though, right? So you would have had to have reviewed it and.
Correct. That is correct.
So why wasn't that brought up then, about the chief being involved with the dispatches?
I don't think the person who negotiated, negotiated the contract knew it, and quite frankly.
But you knew it, though.
No, not until I saw the multi-year contract. When I saw the multi-year contract last week, last Wednesday night, because I questioned it.
We were working with that same draft since March.
That's when I thought.
So it's been a two-year contract since March 21st, right?
I was saying of the fire chief's contract.
The one year, the two-year contract was the trigger that made me thinking about this.
But it, but it, it was the same contract since March. That's all I'm saying.
But last week, when we met, and I know we can't go into all the details, because it was an executive session, I questioned the term multiple years, and I did mention the fire chief.
Last, correct.
I did.
Yeah.
So, that was before the vote was taken last week. As I said, I then thought, "Where did I hear this? What, what am I thinking of?" I, this document that I got from the town accountant, as I say, previous contracts and everything else, they're all on file. All I'm asking is that we take a look at it. I don't want to err, meaning E R R, error, and find out that I, I really feel the current fire chief is not aware of this, and should be made aware of it.
My question is, why wasn't?
If you're watching tonight, Chief McGee.
Yes. Why wasn't he made aware of it before you approved the contract last October?
Nothing triggered anything in that contract for me. What triggered it was the multi-year thing.
What's that got to do with the stipend? For the dispatch, you know?
Separate, separate ideas, yeah, those aren't linked.
I explained that. It's in the, the police chief's.
You're saying, you're saying the fire chief that was.
Are you amused?
I'm not amused, I just, I think that we're talking a lot about things in executives, that are executive session material, and we have a motion on the floor, perhaps to Selectman Goulart's point, we reach out to the fire chief, and we bring this back, or you vote contingent, I don't know, but we're, we're just really dabbling.
We're getting, that's what, that was my point.
We're dabbling.
Okay. So, to nip it in the bud, Selectman Pacheco, you'll get the final word, and then we'll take a vote.
Sure, I just wanted to.
Whatever happens, happens.
Okay. I have nothing else to say, then I was just going to ask if she's going to make a motion to table.
Yes, I make the motion that we table this until next week.
I want to second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Nay. Abstentions? The nays have it. The nays have it. Selectman Pacheco, I can tell you want to say something.
Yeah, I just wondered, are we going to have all that information for us next week, then? The information, talking about prior contracts and all that information?
I'm going to ask, if the town accountant's here tomorrow, I'm going to ask, what do you have, other than, you know, what do we got? Can you think of anything else? Because you were here all this time. Think of details, or think of, if there was other correspondence, if there was whatever else.
And this is all related to the, just so I'm clear on what we're compiling, all related to what the police chief took on at that designated time period of when it was no longer split between the two chiefs.
What the original Board of Selectmen set up for governance, I'll call it governance of the communications center.
At the moment of that debacle, I'll call it, and that the, the fire chief didn't want.
No, no, when it was originally set up, and how it operated, and how people got paid, because all those records would be here. Who got what, and so forth. The date it changed should be available. I remember the event, I don't know the exact date, but I only bring this up because it's an issue of fairness.
I understand. I, I'm going to call a very short recess, I need, for, in a moment. Before I do, I just wanted to say, I have seen that contract since March 21st, none of this was brought up. We did the fire chief's contract back in October, none of this was brought up. So, I don't know why we had to table a vote that we've been talking about since March. I voted nay. I was ready to support it. I've supported it before. And with that, I'm going to take my recess really quick, Cable. I apologize.
I wasn't doing anything, because I didn't know what was on.
They couldn't adjust for the mic.
Oh, they did, yeah.
Don't touch it.
Okay, all right, sorry, Cable, I hope they're not watching.
They're going to have to put a mark over here.
Well, that's a good idea, actually, to put a mark.
It looks like the TV's off. There we go. All right. Thank you, Mrs. Brady. Thank you, Cable, and thank you, public, for being understanding. Now we're, yes, Selectman Pacheco, of course you can.
So, Madam Town Administrator, you're not going to ask the fire chief anything until we get more information?